Berry Mayor Alex Nuttall defended the city of Berry and Simcoe County's encampment eviction policies during the recent Simcoe County Council meeting where officials and representatives from sixteen municipalities discussed various issues. The county highlighted that it is taking several steps to address housing challenges, including expanding shelter spaces and investing in transitional and supportive housing. It also emphasized the need to balance public use and safety amid growing presence of encampments in parks. Midland Deputy Mayor and Simcoe County Councillor Beth Prouse raised concerns about the approach to addressing homelessness and encampments, particularly stressing that individuals removed from encampments must have somewhere to go.
And I can give you a real example. In December, when the encampment in Midland was, they were evicted and everything did go smoothly. And I was keeping this private, but it went smoothly because I provided a place for the majority of these people to be safe because they could not get into the motel service. They couldn't get into the shelter. I called 211 myself and there was no other options.
In response, Mayor Alex Nuttall underscored the importance of keeping parks safe and accessible for all, referencing recent court judgments. He explained that provincial funding would help ensure adequate and accessible spaces for displaced individuals. While he acknowledged the reality that some may decline available support, he emphasized the need for humane and collaborative approach to the issue. Following is our coverage of the meeting.
Housing and homeless services. Let's see here, there is an item here that Mina would like to, would be available to, sorry, Mina, our general manager would be available to answer any questions. I'll read the motion and I'll look for a mover and seconder. That item number CCW 2025 004 dated January 14, 2025, regarding the county of Simcoe's encampment response and shelter expansion initiative be received. And that funding proposal for submission to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing demonstrating alignment with provincial priorities for addressing homelessness and encampments be endorsed. Can I ask for a mover and seconder? Councillor McDonald online, Councillor Fowler also online. Is there, General Manager, do you have any comments you want to ask or mention or do you just open for questions?
I could give a brief description.
Okay.
So this was a, an opportunity that availed itself to the county as a service manager in, on December 13th and it was received on December 16th, giving us about two weeks to submit an application. The application does call for a few different things to be done, including it being endorsed by your council. We, we, we decided to present it at committee as a whole so that both the city of Orillia and city of Berry can also be a part of that review. The application asks for four things. One, for us to accept $81,000 in Canada Ontario Housing Benefit. It's a portable rent subsidy and apply it to a strategy to help people come inside. Second, it asked for us to submit, submit funding requests on behalf of the separated cities and I remember municipalities on the costs of enforcing encampments, things like reconditioning public parks and lands, securing them, the cost of what it would cost to enforce. Third, expanding our shelter system, the cost to expand the spaces temporarily for ninety days in order to bring more people inside. And then fourth, any other additional costs considered, which includes returning public space for public use in the spring. So this is the application we put forward and we're seeking endorsement here at council.
All right. Thank you very much, General Manager. I'll go to Mayor Nuttall first and then I have some others, so.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and certainly to General Manager and your team for putting together this application. I think this is incredibly important to respond to the province, to make sure that the dollars that are available are invested locally here. Obviously, this has been an issue in Berry that's been well documented. Certainly, we have other municipalities inside the county as well as in the city of Orillia that have also faced some major concerns on this front as well. I do want to, you know, share with, with county council that from, from our standpoint, we, we really, really, really do want to see this move forward. I think that there's some really neat plans that are being discussed and quarterbacked by the county at this point to, to answer the day. And, you know, in terms of, of the work the city's done on this to date, it was our request that actually started this entire conversation. It was the request of the Premier into the Minister of Municipal Affairs that started this conversation to move towards the, the removal of encampments and the investment in transitional housing and support services to help individuals who are in a very vulnerable position. So we are, we are certainly supportive of this. We'll endorse it at a council meeting coming up. I think that's being shared with, with the county right now, maybe yesterday afternoon. And it is probably the number one issue that we face in the city of Berry. It is a social services issue. It's broader than that even when you consider that we're responsible for keeping our parks in, in good order. The final piece that I just want to, want to highlight because this always turns into a bigger conversation is if you haven't seen, there was a judgment in Hamilton that came out just before Christmas, which really echoed the narrative and the conversation that was being had by many and most of the big city mayors, as well as what the premier came out in, in support of, in support of, which says that, you know, your parks need to be for vulnerable populations, but that includes all vulnerable populations. That includes seniors, that includes children. And so I think there's a bit of a shift within the judiciary right now in terms of allowing municipalities to keep their parks safe and clean. At the same time, we have a responsibility between the county and the city in Berry and the other municipalities affected to make sure that we do it in a way that is fair to the individuals who are being, who are being, you know, their tents are being removed. So thank you again to, to the county for leadership on this and look forward to it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Nuttall. Councillor Fryer?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say first, I appreciate the province responding to the concerns that were raised and, and doing it in a quick manner. And in that regard, to our staff for putting a proposal together in a very quick matter over the holiday period too. December 13, the announcement, January 3, you put it in. So I was just going to ask through, through the chair to the general manager, when or have you heard anything even just informally, or when would you expect to hear something in a formal basis?
General Manager?
Through the chair. So we have been in direct contact with inquiry questions on our application just this past week, where the province and their staff team have just asked for some follow-up questions to the application. So that's an indicator from past experience that the decision's probably forthcoming in the next few days or a week or so. So yeah, we anticipate, you know, hearing quickly. The other factor too is the Canada Ontario Health Benefit required a submission on the plan to use those additional municipal rent, the municipal, the portable rent supplements by, by February and that needed to be submitted a few weeks ago. So that kind of indicates it's a requirement that we'll get a decision quickly. Also, the application, the funding is eligible from January 1st to March 30th. So that also tells us we're going to get a decision very quickly.
Just to follow up, Chair, that's great news. Again, then I appreciate the province moving so quickly. Again, sometimes they don't. So I'm glad to hear that, that that will happen and look forward to the initiatives in regards to our community. And again, appreciate staff's constant communication with our staff in regards to that.
Thank you very much, Councillor Fryer. Good comments there. Councillor Gordon, I believe you're next, and then I have Mr. Mayor McIsaac.
Thanks. It's great to see this report come through and sort of the quick pivot to address the call for applications, which I, you know, I had never doubted, Mina's and his team would be all over this. Matter of fact, I think I emailed them when I got back from that announcement in Toronto saying, guess what's coming? So I can share some success stories that even prior to this announcement, you know, Midland, which, you know, is, we have the sort of unenviable number three position in Simcoe County for homeless population, second only to Orillia and Berry. We were able to successfully clear out an encampment that was on private property with no media, hubbub, you know, no drama. It went as well as any of these could, I think, could ever go. It was a multidisciplinary group approach between our bylaw department and the fire and the police and the county, of course, and Empower Simcoe and our shelter at Guest House. People got placed into hotels through the motel voucher program. Even folks with pets were managed, which is, that's a really tough one to, to deal with. This thing went as, as well as it could. Now, it's small in scope compared to my neighbors, you know, in Orillia and Berry that have, you know, encampments with hundreds of, of people experiencing homelessness. But a shout out to the county that this, this system works. We didn't need a stick approach. I welcome the stick approach from the, from the province. Don't get me wrong, I was standing on the stage and we signed that letter. But it just shows it's carrot and stick. And the carrot approach worked really, really well. And so I just wanted to shout out to the county's team for their support on this. I know they're continuing to work with the funding they had and the new funding they anticipate getting towards supportive housing. There's a big project, you know, that we still, it's a cloud of uncertainty whether it moves ahead or not. Unfortunately, Midland doesn't have a warming, overnight warming facility, just because there's no facility. Nobody was able to hold it or host it. So we're still hopeful, you know, what's left of the winter. But the county's all over this and the funding that comes in and of course, all the, the metrics that are being collected and are available on that open dashboard can show anybody who's interested and curious about just how dire the need is and how occupied our shelter spaces and things are. It's all there to be seen. So just echoing again, continued good work, continued appreciation. The hand's always out though, because there's always more to do. And I know that as soon as the good weather comes, our encampments will resume. I mean, not to say we don't have any now, but they're really hidden. So the ones that are more in your face are going to resume and we're hoping that by then, some of the new initiatives from the province and the disincentives to issues that are not directly attributable to homelessness, like open drug use and panhandling and things that are downtown cores, but, you know, semi-connected, that there'll be some new ways to, to manage those that don't fall into the lap of, of the GM's team. Those are more for us to deal with as municipalities. So all in all, this is good news. Great to see the responsiveness by the team. Funding's going to good use and of course, I'll continue to lobby on the Affordable Housing Committee and on this Florida, you know, let's pay attention to the, the outliers, which are the big three that are experiencing the disproportionately most homelessness pressures, of which my municipality is one. And let's just stay focused on trying to apply all the funding and measures and effort to those. And I really look forward to the heart house model being approved for Berry as a, as phase one. And then the hub mentality, hub and spoke mentality, where we can see that extended into Orillia, Midland, Collingwood, you know, which clearly has a need because they've got the rapid rehousing there. There's a lot of work to be done, but this is just acknowledging the, the fact that the province and the premier was listening. And although not all parts of the announcement were well received by everybody, especially people that are, you know, I will call them bleeding hearts because I don't mean it to be a negative thing, but folks that, you know, are just more predisposed to super caring rather than necessarily the finance and the other components that come with people experiencing homelessness. So trying to find that middle ground, I think, is what, what was done and how it all works out in the court with some of these new court rulings remains to be seen. But again, it's carrot and stick and we have carrot, we'll always go carrot first, but it's nice to know you got the stick if you needed it.
Good comments, well put together. Thank you very much. Mayor McIsaac is next, then I have Councillor Dolan and then Prost, and then I see Fallas again. Mayor McIsaac?
Thank you through the chair. Certainly appreciate Mayor Nuttall's comments and we, Orillia certainly agrees with those. We appreciate Mayor Nuttall's leadership, certainly getting this initiated, as well as Mina's speed and agility and responding. I really is obviously a huge supporter of this. We vamped up our efforts on the Warming Centre. We've partnered with the county, investing in transitional housing for youth and we're contemplating in various ways rapid rehousing for, for more. This is obviously a huge issue for us and as everyone said here, safety's paramount and we look forward to future developments here. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Chair Dolan?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to comment a little more broadly on, on, you know, the provincial aspect of this and that it, it isn't just a Simcoe County problem, it isn't just a big city problem, it's happening all over Ontario, particularly in northern Ontario. There's a significant number of, of encampments and issues there. I think that, that this is a good step. I, I've been hearing horror stories for a number of years from other municipalities, Kingston, Mayor Patterson being one of them, where they finally had a very large encampment that they weren't allowed to take down. It was finally taken down due to the fact there was a double homicide at their park. So there are, while I appreciate this work, I see it as pulling people out downstream. And I think the work, the really hard work is making sure people don't fall in upstream in the first place. And that's the type of work that both AMO and I know the big city mayors are working on as well. Back in August, AMO and the big city mayors did a joint announcement on solve the crisis.ca. If you haven't yet, I would suggest you have a look at, at that item that Mary Ann Meadward, the Chair of OBCM, announced at the, at the AMO conference in August. And also just last Thursday, I believe, AMO's paper on homelessness encampment came out and it's an, it's an eyebrow raiser. To get the full scope of what's going on in the province and the investment required to solve the crisis, I think it's really worth taking a look at. Thank you.
Excellent. Good points and thank you actually for highlighting too, that the, the government and the lower tiers are working together on this to get, you know, lockstep. Well done. I believe Councillor Prost, are you, did you have a question or a comment?
I do have some comments. I'm very happy with everything that the, the province and the county is doing regarding the encampments. I don't hundred percent agree with how they're being removed at this time. They need to have somewhere to go. And I can give you a real example. In December, when the, the encampment in Midland was, they were evicted and everything did go smoothly. And I was keeping this private, but it went smoothly because I provided a place for the majority of these people to be safe because they could not get into the motel service. They couldn't get into the shelter. I called 211 myself and there was no other options. So, and I realize in saying this, of course, everything's not going, going to go smoothly in the beginning. I know that the county is working to, to make that happen, but it is not happening yet. And just sweeping out these encampment, encampments at this time until there is really somewhere for these people to go. And I can tell you in December in Midland, there wasn't somewhere for all of them to go until I stepped in. And that's, it's just very sad and it's not a bleeding heart. People can't have nowhere to go. If they had have left and went to town property, the same thing would have happened. And all you're doing is, you know, removing, displacing people that are already displaced and keep doing it. I do know that these people are working with the county and working with the Guest House and other agencies and they're trying to move their way up. Not all people in encampments are drug users. They're not all bad people. And I'm not saying that that's what they're always being referred to, but that is, that's what it, that's what it comes down to when people talk about it. Because there are a lot of encampments that are really bad and there's lots of drugs and needles and there is issues and I'm not saying there's not. And I'd like to see everybody housed one way or another and no encampments. So I support all of this, but I do want to say that there is still a lot of work to do. And Midland was a win-win, but not on its own. Thank you.
Councillor Prost? I just want to acknowledge your work that you did there and, and thank you and acknowledge your fine leadership. Good job. Councillor Fallas, I believe you're up next?
Thanks. Through the chair, I just wanted to speak to this very briefly, I'm going to have to go. But just right off the cuff, there was mention of bleeding hearts. Certainly, I guess I would categorize myself in that, in that, in the sense that I, I really do believe that everyone is a human being and deserves to be treated as such. And we really shouldn't be criminalizing poverty. Certainly supportive of the resources going to things like transitional housing to shelters, but certainly concerned around how we're, what types of resources we're using to address encampments and how they're being removed. That needs to be done very sensitively and in collaboration with those that are, are working directly with this population. So I just wanted to express both the support for the resources going towards addressing housing, but also just a concern around how we're, how we're addressing the other side of things. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councillor Fallas. If there's nothing further? Yes, Mayor Nuttall once again.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to pipe in. Most of the, the legislation that came forth from the province was not about private lands because the focus of the judicial, the, the decisions were around municipal properties, parks, forests, those types of things. Now, I, I think that there, there needs to be that separation made because for us in the city of Berry, like Midland, when there's a private encampment or an encampment of private land, the owner of that land can request it be gone. And we've made with, with your team here at the county, a priority on if that's happening, the county needs to have a few days to go in to offer services, to offer help, to offer support. Those things are already happening. They would have happened in Midland as, as was brought forward by the mayor, they happened in Berry, I'm sure they happened in Orillia. It's done a very respectful and a very caring and compassionate way by the county and by the municipalities. And so I think that we need to be careful here, how we are categorizing and, and creating divisions on this matter, specifically when what, what we're actually dealing with in the city Berry, I'm not sure about the others, I'm just speaking for the city of Berry here, is where we own a lot of land and all of a sudden that land gets turned into an encampment. It could be two on day one and then it's ten tents by day 10 and it's 20 tents and so on and so forth. And the courts have come down and decided you cannot remove those unless you have an adequate space for each person, an accessible space for each person. What this funding will do is allow the county of Simcoe to go in and make sure there is an adequate and accessible space for each one of those people. And that's the really good carrot part of it. And the stick part of it is if somebody says, you know what, I don't feel that that's accessible for myself, but it is, then the municipality can still move in and ask that person to move on and offer those services that are available. Because some folks, some folks do not want to go inside. Some folks do not want help. And that's just the reality. You know, there's no quote unquote bleeding heart that can fix that matter or, you know, I'm a bleeding heart on this issue. I want to see us provide the services, but there's nothing that I can do to force that person inside. What we can do is work with the county of Simcoe, provide the services, make sure the option's there and do everything possible to do this in a humane and respectful manner.
Again, good comments. Thank you very much, Mayor Nuttall. I don't see any other cards and so I think we've had a really good discussion on this and I think that it's, it's quite an important point. Sadly, this will be something we're going to be dealing with more and more and more into the future and I have a great faith in our team here at the county through the leadership of our general manager. So at this point, we do have a mover and seconder, so I am prepared to call the motion. Those in favor? That carries, thank you very much. All right, moving on, section number 23. This is the long-term care management and we do have a report from Health Force Ontario Staffing Initiatives. There's a recommendation here, I'll read it and I'll look for a mover and seconder, that item number CCW 2025 011 dated January 14, 2024. It says 2024, let's make that 25. Regarding Health Force Ontario Staffing Initiatives update be received. Mover and seconder please? Where are we? Mr. Bell and Mr. Greenlaw, thank you very much. Any questions on this? Any comments? Looking around, seeing none, I'll call the motion all in favor. Thank you. That carries. Moving to 23.2, this is the base funding for Behavioral Supports Ontario Services and Long-Term Care. Very good report, I'll read the report, or read the recommendation, look for a mover and seconder. That item CCW 2025 012 dated January 14, 2025, regarding the 2425 base funding for Behavioral Supports Ontario Services in Long-Term Care be received and that staff be authorized to fully utilize new base funding as generally outlined in item CCW 025012, including recruitment in an additional one F, full-time equivalent registered practical nurse to the Geriatric Mental Health Long-Term Care Program. Can I ask Councillor Nagusi to move that? Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Cox, thank you. And General Manager Sinclair is available for questions and comments. Do you have any comments you'd like to bring forward, General Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment that we're so pleased to bring this information forward to council. There is a substantive increase over 300,000 just in our base funding for retention purposes to address cost of living increases over the last number of years. So we certainly appreciate that increase in funding. We've had ongoing discussions with Ontario Health and, and are very pleased with this base funding allotment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, GM. Is there any members with any questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to call the motion. All those in favor? Thank you, that carries. Where are we at? We're at 23.3. This is the Health and Emergency Services Performance Reporting Update. And the ask is that the item CCW 2025 015 dated January 14, 2025, regarding the Health and Emergency Services Division Performance Reporting Long-Term Care Balance Scorecard. That's a good, long sentence. Be received. Okay. Is there a mover and seconder? Councillor Van Stauberne? Is there, where are we, where are we at? Mr. Norris, Councillor Norris, thank you. Is there any questions on this item? Questions or comments? Looking around, seeing none, I'll call the motion all in favor. That also carries, thank you. 23.4 is our Long-Term Care Senior Services Accreditation. That item CCW 2025 028 dated January 14, 2025, Long-Term Care and Senior Services Accreditation Canada update be received. Mover and seconder please? Where are we? Mr. Smith. And that will be Brian Smith. And seconder, looking from this house, where are we at? There, Mr. LeWoye, nice to see you. Is there any questions on this, this report? Yes, Councillor Cox?
Once again, I'd just like to thank the staff. They, they came through very quickly on any of the extra requirements that they hadn't passed and I just want to commend them and I hope you pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because, sorry, just because their jobs are hard jobs and they do great work with our seniors. Thank you.
Absolutely correct. Any other comments or questions? All right. I'll call the motion then. All those in favor? That carries again, thank you. Going to section 25, our emergency management. Let's see here, CCW 2025 016, renewal of the 911 Primary Public Safety Answering Point Agreement. There's a recommendation here that item CCW 2025 016 dated January 14, 2025, regarding renewal of the 911 Primary Public Safety Answering Point Agreement be received and that necessary, that the necessary bylaw be presented to authorize the warden and county clerk to renew the primary public safety answering point agreement with the Ontario Provincial Police. Mover and seconder to put this on the floor? Mr. Anderson, Mr. Rossen, thank you. And I believe, GM Sinclair, you have someone who wants to speak to this, is that correct?
Three, Mr. Chair, a couple of very quick comments. First of all, we're very pleased to bring forward a renewal of this agreement. We've been in partnership for more than two decades. The OPP has maintained their rate at 0.56 for that same period of time and so we're pleased to have this. There is some commentary within, contained within the report around the Next Generation 911 program. We are working closely with our partners, hope to have more information near the end of the month. Bell has called a meeting in terms of an update on this process, so when we have more information, we'll bring that forward to county council. Thank you.
Thank you, GM. Is there any questions to this? The warden?
Maybe one, if you can clarify it for both myself and I believe my Oramadani Severn and Romero, we use the Aurelia dispatch. Now, my understanding was all cell phones would still go to this, or do the cell phones now go to the local dispatch? Because it was easy when you had hard lines, you were in that catchment zone. So if somebody calls 911 in Romero or Severn, does it go to this dispatch first, and from there it's moved to the Aurelia dispatch? Or does it go directly to the Aurelia dispatch?
Thank you for the question through, Mr. Chair. I will direct this question to our emergency manager, Mr. Grant Durfee. Thank you.
Thank you for the, excuse me, thank you for the question and through the chair. The cell phones, it would depend on where the tower is located. So if the tower was in the catchment area for Aurelia, you would go to Aurelia. If the tower was in the catchment area for, we use Communication Center North Bay, it would go to the OPP at North Bay. So it's where that cell tower you're pinging off of is located.
Makes sense. Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Bell?
Just one quick question I came, I just thought of. Does VPN change the, being able to identify what tower it's pinged up? Like, are you still able to see that?
Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, so through you, Chair. So if you're on like a VoIP phone system or VPN system that does inhibit the ability for them to see where your location is, there are systems in place. So when you set up a new VoIP or VPN phone line, where you can manually enter your address to your provider, and that can be relayed off to the dispatch center, but that is an extra step that has to happen with those VoIP or VPN systems.
Good information. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'm prepared to call the motion. All those in favor? That also carries. Your worship, this is the point where I get to ask this great question. Are there any other matters for consideration in human services? And seeing none, I get to pass the chair back to your worship.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Meers. And now Chair Dolan for Corporate Services, please.
Thank you, your worship. We're at item 26, 26.1 is a notice of appeal, Town of Collingwood Official Plan. Anyone have any comments or questions they'd like to? Counselor Friar.
Thank you, Chair Dolan. And I, and not any questions. I just want to say to staff, we appreciate the cooperation they're having with our staff in regards to the appeals. And that our staff highlighted to all of council at our last meeting, and particularly pointed out that they're, they're working very, very closely with the county staff to try to deal with these as quickly as possible. So I just wanted to convey our appreciation in that regard.
Thank you. So I'd ask for a mover then, Counselor Hamlin, and a seconder, Counselor Friar. That item CCW 2025-013 dated January the 14th, 2025, regarding appeals to the Ontario Land Tribunal regarding the Town of Collingwood Official Plan be received, and the staff and legal council be permitted to attend all necessary meetings, complete all required filings, and attend all proceedings regarding the appeal of the Town of Collingwood Official Plan appeal, and that County Director of Planning, Chief Planner and/or the County Solicitor be authorized to sign any minutes of settlement on behalf of the County of Simcoe if required, where such settlement maintains the intent of applicable provincial, county, and town policies, bylaws, and standards. All those in favor of that recommendation? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, under Engineering, item 27.1 is the Transportation Master Plan Update from 2024 with progress and next steps. Comments or questions on the TMP? Seeing none, could I ask for a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Misscimmings and Counselor Norris. That item CCW 2025-014 dated January the 14th, 2025, regarding Transportation Master Plan Update, progress and next steps be received, and that county staff initiate the process for updating the county official plan to incorporate recommendations from the Transportation Master Plan, and that staff pursue the implementation of the Transportation Master Plan Update 2024 through future projects, partnerships, and annual capital budgets. All those in favor? Any opposed? One opposed? Seeing, okay, we have one opposed, and that is carried. And then I will also ask if there's any further matters for consideration. Seeing none, I'll pass it off to the warden.
Thank you, Chair Dolan. Chair Evans, Performance Management, please.
Thank you, your worship, and welcome, House. And Happy New Year to everybody, if I haven't had a chance to say hi to you. Moving on, Performance Management Consent Items. We have, we have 10 on the docket today. So I'll open this up with anybody that'd like to have a discussion or amend any of the items, if you could call them out. Otherwise, we'll consider them as a whole. Seeing, sorry, Counselor Van Stauberne? Sorry, he might be on mute there, Counselor. Still on mute.
Get her working. There we go.
Thank you.
There you go.
My apologies. Item 29.7.
You'd like to discuss or amend?
I'd just like to comment on it.
Okay, that's fine.
We had the opportunity to do a flag raising yesterday, and we had the opportunity to meet with the people from Crime Stoppers. There, it's a very well letter, very appreciate, appropriate at this time. They're struggling with their finances, and in times of, we'll say, tough, economic conditions, every community needs to look out at the support that can be given to the Crime Stoppers facility. And we were very receptive in speaking with the OPP and speaking with Crime Stoppers members. So I hope any other community that has the opportunity to, to receive them is receptive to what their asks are right now. And we are definitely in clear view looking at that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Counselor Rossen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to speak with my colleague just brought up about 29.7, 29.8, to see if possibly we could get a staff report come back at a subsequent meeting to see how the County Simcoe could support Crime Stoppers on behalf of the 16 lower-tier municipalities, because they do tremendous work. And I think we all benefit by supporting a great effort like this.
Thank you, Counselor Rossen. Appreciate that. Do you have a seconder for that? Counselor Gordon? Thank you. Okay. We'll pull that one out, and we'll, unless there's any other items for discussion. Counselor Misscimmins?
Thank you through you, Chair. Just want to echo what Counselor Van Stauberne said. We in Tiny also had the opportunity last week to do a flag raising with the Crime Stoppers group and listen to some of the stats that they provide. And I think in the times that we're in now, more than ever, we need all eyes and ears on the ground to prevent crime where we can. And they've got an amazing program that keeps it completely anonymous for, for any tips. Many people may not, and this is more for the public's awareness. If you do provide a tip, you are given a special number code. And if your tip is successful, you can go into any TD bank, I believe in the county, and claim your reward anonymously. So the program works effectively and does a great job of, of reducing crime within our communities.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Misscimmins. Counselor Brian Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to echo again what everyone else has said. And I can tell you that for the community of Wasaga Beach, we'll be doing our flag raising coming up. And, and I've had many discussions with many members at Crime Stoppers in Wasaga Beach within our community. It's been a great organization. It's a great organization on a whole, and has done a lot of great work throughout the county and throughout the province for that matter, if not further and beyond. And it would be a shame to see organizations like this fall by the wayside. And so I would encourage the county and each municipality where you can to, to do what you can to help them carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith, in full agreement. Okay, to start off with, we'll pull a motion or propose a motion to deal with consent items save for item 29.7. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Walker, thank you, moving. And Counselor Norris, seconding. Thank you very much. Counselor Dolan?
Friendly amendment, if I could. Could we include 29.7 and 29.8 in there as well, which is the letter right from Crime Stoppers?
Counselor Rossen, is this something you're meaning to? I see a yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Counselor Gordon?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll amend the, amend the amendment. So we have a mover and a seconder for the consent items to be received as information save for 29.7 and 29.8. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, we'll deal with the, the amended motion now to receive items 29.7, 29.8 to be directed to staff for further examination. Move in a seconder for that, please? Counselor Misscimmins?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry to interrupt. You have Ross and Counselor Gordon would second it, that the letters be referred to staff for a report back. You already had a mover and seconder. But the, to the members, the motion essentially would just be to, you know, push the request outlined in the letters to staff for a report back.
Okay, fair enough. We'll do Counselor Rossen as a mover and Counselor Gordon as a seconder then. Any further discussion? Fully in, fully in support of this. Obviously, Counselor Misscimmins mentioned that they were in, in Tiny last week. Just give you a couple of, just a little top shots. In 2024, in Simcoe, Dufferin, and, and Muskoka, there was 1,789 tips received. And from those tips, there were 82 arrests made. And the ask that will be under discussion is approximately $10,000. So in terms of a dollars per tip received, it's $5.59. And in terms of an arrest, it's $121. So those of you that are in law enforcement prior careers, I think we'll see that that's a pretty reasonable number, and probably a little less than what would be spent. And obviously, a very worthwhile program for our community. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Sorry.
Sorry. Counselor Gordon, do you have something before we go to motion?
Well, it's just effectively the endorsement, this program. I know my, my law enforcement career was invaluable for solving crime in the Southern Georgian area. The tip may have originated at Midland or one of our neighboring municipalities, but the crime may have been happening in Midland or one of our neighboring municipalities. Same rings true when you look at the stats for the number of tips relating to crime in Berry, Aurelia, and other, even the smaller areas, crime is borderless. So I think keeping this organization afloat is incumbent upon each of our municipalities. But rather than having to rely on the whims of municipalities and the ebb and tide of decision-making at our 16 municipalities, it might make sense to bring this to the county level and just build this into our budget as something we support. Right now, we're exploring the option of a county-wide police service. I think that's a report that's coming back at some point. It's going to be a beast. But normally, we don't get into the funding of law enforcement. But this isn't really law enforcement. It's community safety initiatives. So what I, what my ask would be is this report outlines not only what we would be asking the county to build into its base budget year after year, but also a commitment from our two neighbors in Simcoe, Dufferin, and Muskoka, Crime Stoppers, that they would equally contribute on some formula that we agree on, you know, whether it's population or voter, you know, something. And that would be just something we'd all agree on and be baked into our base budgets. So this organization has sustainability they can count on, rather than, again, the ebb and flow of every individual municipality. The expectation is they would continue to fundraise for the tips that they give out, because they do, that's what they do right now. But the core operational funding that keeps the organization afloat and the phones being answered and the email tips coming in, that would be sustained through the three partners and the beneficiaries. So just for scope, you know, asking for a letter or a report from staff, that would be my hope and expectation of what we would explore. And then our support would be contingent on our two partners agreeing. Sounds like we've already got that support up in Muskoka, and we just need to get that from Dufferin. I don't know why they wouldn't with the other two of us in there. But I think it's a unified approach that just makes sense and takes it out of the minutia of the grant asks that we all have to deal with at our own municipality every year.
Good comments. Certainly, we'll keep those, and staff can include those. Just one addendum, really, though, that in the letter that we received from Muskoka, names a fourth partner, that being the city of Berry as a participant as well. So we'll just make sure that we clarify that in terms of who's going to be participating and to what degree. But good comments. Okay, good. Mr. Clerk, are we all good on that? Good, good. Thank you, counsel. Moving on? Yeah, we have to call the vote, I guess, or it'll be a good idea. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you very much. The motion is carried. Sorry, just scrolling through here. Scroll down too far. Okay, moving on. Item CCW 2025-003, Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology, aka SWIFT, Board of Directors nominations for 2025-2027. Straightforward, the motion being that Deputy Warden Jennifer Coughlin be nominated for appointment to the Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology SWIF Board of Directors for the 2025 to 2027 term. Can I have a mover and a seconder for discussion? Counselor Walker, Counselor McClellan, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, appreciate, or Deputy Warden. Thank you for participating. Moving on to item 31.1, CCW 2022-030, which is a 2025 borrowing bylaw, standard item every year. Motion is that item CCW 2025-030 dated, excuse me, January 14, 2025, regarding the 2025 borrowing bylaw be received, and that the necessary bylaw be presented to County Council substantially in the form attached as Schedule 1 of item CCW 2025-030, to allow the county to borrow temporarily on its line of credit as may be necessary during the year to meet its current payment obligations. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Meers, moving. Counselor Lavoie for seconding. Thank you very much. Any discussion on this item? Any questions, comments? I think we all go through this on a lower-tier level every year. So, good. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Performance Management, Fleet and Property. We have a, an emergency item that came up, item CCW 2025-006, Solid Waste Management Loader Emergency Replacement. Motion is that item CCW 2025-006 dated January 14, 2025, regarding Solid Waste Management Loader Emergency Replacement be received, and that they require $470,000 for the purchase of a replacement loader be approved, and that funds be provided from the insurance proceeds and solid waste management reserve as outlined in this item, and that staff proceed with purchasing a replacement loader as generally outlined in item CCW 2025-006. Move in a seconder for discussion? Counselor Norris, seconding. Counselor Bell, thank you very much. Any comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And moving on to item 33, which is any other items under Performance Management that he'd be like for consideration? Seeing none at this time, your worship, I pass it, pass it back to you.
Thank you, Chair Evans. Everybody's read the reports. Is there any indicator, any counselor needs to go in camera to discuss them further? I am not seeing any. I'll take my time on that. So with that, then I've got some motions that direction 34.1, the direction in camera and recommendations contained within confidential item CCW 2025-007 dated January 14, 2025, regarding a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land be approved and voted upon in accordance with section 239.6b of the Municipal Act. Moved by Counselor Walker, seconded by Counselor Friar. All in favor? That is carried. Opposed of any? Not seeing any. Okay. And next, that the in camera, the direction in camera and recommendations contained within confidential item CCW 2025-027, dated January 14, 2025, regarding labor relations or employee negotiations be voted upon and approved in accordance with section 239.6b of the Municipal Act. Moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Norris. All in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. Thank you. None opposed. So now that I need a motion, that Committee of the Whole rise and report to council and resume sitting as county council at 12:19. Moved by Counselor Misscimmins, seconded by Counselor Bell. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. I'm going to keep going if everybody's okay with that. Do I see anybody that needs a break? Not. We're, we're in the home stretch here. So we will now go back to the Committee of the Whole report. So it, we will now go back to the committee of the whole reports. Uh, Chair Evans.
Thank you, your worship. Moving on to item 36.1, committee of the whole report for performance management for January 14th, 2025. Motion being that the performance management recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report dated January 14th, 2025 be approved, including the confidential item. Um, moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor, deputy warden Coglan. Thank you. Um, any discussion on this?
Any items to be polled?
Any items to be polled?
Not seen, so, sorry, I call the votes. All in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. Uh, next, Chair Meers.
Thank you very much, uh, your worship. Um, item 36 dash two, our committee of the whole report for human services. That human services recommends, that the human services recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report dated January 14th, 2025 be approved, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Brian Smith.
Everybody's heard the most, any items to be polled? Not seeing any, so all in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. And now Chair Dolan, please.
Thank you, worship, by myself and seconded by councillor Miscumings, that the corporate services recommendations contained within the county committee of the whole report dated January the 14th, 2025 be approved, including the confidential item.
Everybody's heard the motion, any to be polled? Not seeing any, so all in favor? And opposed of any? I'm seeing none opposed. So thank you. So consideration of bills, councillor Norcross.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Move by myself, seconded by councillor Burkett, that bills number 7106, 25 and 701725 be enacted as bylaws of the county ASIMCO.
On the bills, any questions? All in favor? Opposed of any? And that is carried. Thank you. So now we're on to announcements. I'll start out, just a reminder that the election for chairs and vice chairs of all the committees, subcommittees and the Lake Simcoe Regional Board, uh, Board will take place, Lake Simcoe Regional Airport Board, uh, will take place at the first meeting of the year as per the terms of reference, uh, as, as they are in all the committees yearly. Also, just a reminder that economic development will immediately follow, uh, the county council here for those members that are on that board. And can you please check your emails? We have a couple of events coming up. I know Thursday, uh, we have an announcement at Georgian College and then the following Thursday, we have one at Lakehead. So if you could check your invites and try and make it to any of those events, you can. Any other announcements, councillor Dolan?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I was very saddened to hear of the passing of, um, Rick Jones from Jones Consulting, the founder of Jones Consulting Group. Any of you who've been around for a while will know that, uh, Rick, uh, for a large part, although, although mostly in the city of Barry, for a large part, had a lot to do with the planning in Simcoe County and, um, and, uh, he passed away, um, quite early due to complications due to cancer. And, uh, my condolences to Cheryl and his two girls. And also the, uh, there will be a, um, celebration of life at, uh, Steckley Gutterham on, I believe, Sunday, the 23rd, I want to say, uh, at 1 o'clock. Thank you. Check the date if you're going. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Uh, councillor Brian Smith?
Thank you, your worship. I just announced that on February the 7th, at 6:00 PM, the doors will open, uh, for a concert at our new arena, uh, in Wasaga Beach. Uh, the opening act at 7:45 will be the Rivertown Saints, uh, opening for our general award-winning headliner, Tim Hicks. And so anyone who, uh, wants to see some good country entertainment, come on out to